Yeah, I'm gonna call to the meeting back at 6:30 PM. Committee was in executive session for the purpose of discussing NDA negotiations and administration personnel matters. And we are back. So for the record, all of the school committee members are here right now. We're also joined by our superintendent and both assistant superintendents. Welcome, everybody. And as always, we will begin with public input. If anybody on the call does have a question or something, or something that they would like to add into public comment that is not on the agenda, please feel free to unmute yourself or type your name into the chat. We will call on you. Give me a moment to do that. Okay. Here it is, none of this time. We'll move on. Typically, we have a super court, but my understanding is to be sure, because there's a softball game right now. So hopefully, threatening is doing well. That means we will go directly into the agenda. We'll skip, we always skip around a little bit. We'd like to deal with our guests first, and we are honored today to have the Bachelor School here with their new principal, Mr. Maloney. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Maloney for the Bachelor School presentation.
Well, thank you so very much for inviting us tonight. It's, I have quite a few friends and guests and colleagues here with me tonight to help me with this presentation. Just to highlight some of the great work that the Bachelor School continues to do, even with the new principal. Before I forget, I'd like to thank all my volunteers tonight. We have a number of students, and I'll allow their faculty advisors to introduce them into what they're going to present to you tonight. I'm certainly not here to steal the show or talk too much. I'd much prefer to let the students of the Bachelor School do the talking in the presentation. So I think we'll get right into it. We have a good, I think, cross-section, a good variety of grade levels and activities and events, and some recognition of the good work that we're doing here. So without further ado, I am going to introduce Mrs. Reynolds, a kindergarten teacher here at the Bachelor School, to talk to us about the cookie monster, 100th Day of School Celebration. So, Mrs. Reynolds, I'll let you take it one more.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Maloney. Hi, everyone. I'm Debbie Reynolds, and I'm a kindergarten teacher here at the Bachelor School. And as any kindergarten teacher can tell you and any student, that the 100th Day of School is a big deal. This year, being a little different, I still wanted to make the day special for the kindergarteners and reach out to our North Reading community and support them as well. So I thought the cookie mixture project was an ideal project to do. After coordinating the dates and the times with my kindergarten team, Mrs. King and Mrs. Cullen and Mrs. Stone, and with Mr. Malone, both, we were treated at the North Reading cookie mix rate. We were awesome. We decided on cookie mixes since that's what the cookie was low on. It worked out perfectly. Our goal was to count 100 cookie mixes for our 100 days. However, with the generosity of all the kindergarten families, we were able to coordinate 143 cookie mixes, which was awesome. We also made a little connection to this project by reading the book, Ready Fringe. It's the story of two friends, one who was struggling to keep food in her refrigerator and put food on the table, and how her other friend's family helped her. So the cookie project was just the perfect way to end this project. And we went all the way up to Community Street and downhill street to the North Reading Food Pantry. So it was a really nice experience for all of the teachers and the pantry of all the kids as a whole. And because it was such a success, I was really looking forward to getting next year. So I want to let the students share their experience with kids. Come on up, Sam. Oh, see, I can hear. And it's kind of, take your mask off, honey. We're good.
Hi, I'm Sam. We...
You're asleep.
There were so many different types of cookie mixes donated. We lined them up with the little ones, like, by one size and ten. It was nice to take a walk to the food pantry and help people.
Oh, that was sweet, Sam. Next is Matt, tell him he's on.
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name is Max.
Sorry.
All the kindergarten staff has walked to the food pantry. And Mr. Maloney has brought us two. Officer Luke has folded up in his cruiser. One thing I learned was where she was. I was happy she played the picture of the photo because it was...
Excellent, Matt. There you go, my DM, take your mask off. So we could see your face and you can talk.
Hi, my name is Max. I like putting the cookies in the donation box. Also, the reason why... Everyone, cookies!
You're right, Max. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Reynolds. That was, that was great. It was really a fun morning. It was, I think, our first field trip, technically, that the school had had since last year. So it was nice to get the kindergarten students up and out and walk up to the food pantry and provide a little service for the community. So Mrs. Reynolds was awesome organizing that and our students. And we did a great job collecting those cookie mixes. So thank you, Mrs. Reynolds, and to all of our kindergarten students. Next up, we have Mrs. Tina Warwick. She's a grade five teacher and also a science curriculum coordinator on grade five. And she's going to present the Cambridge Science Festival Curiosity Challenge in Spore.
Good evening, everyone. Over February vacation, several Bachelor School students took it upon themselves to participate in the 2021 Curiosity Challenge sponsored by MIT. Students submitted a drawing, a poem, a photograph of what they are curious about, and explained how it prompted them to explore the world. There were 2,500 entries from the United States, Spain, and Argentina. The following students are the Curiosity Challenge Award winners here at the Bachelor School. Tanya D. from grade two, Mrs. Catherine Faes class. Riley B. from grade three in Mrs. Nicole DiD'Amato's class. And Charlotte M., grade five, in my class. The students would like to share their winning cookie mixes. First up is Charlotte.
Um, just a damn show. I wrote down a poem. Why are humans intelligent? Why are we smart? How do we create art? How did we discover we all have a heart? Why did we build houses that reach oh-so-high? How did we build rockets, put it up in the sky? Why are we intelligent? Because you see, no other species can count to three.
Next up is Riley from grade three.
Hi, my name is Riley Borcaskey. I'm in third grade at Bachelor School. The question I asked that became one of the two most to be common winners was how were different languages around the world created? I chose to participate in the curiosity process because I have always been curious about many things. I decided to ask this question because I wondered how people communicate. I realized that all people communicate in different ways. And so I wondered how all these different ways created. I came up with the language "hello" in many different languages on the page because I wanted to represent the different languages around the world. I searched up all the differences for hello on the internet for the Curiosity Challenge project.
And finally, our last winner is Tanya. She's in grade two.
Hello, my name is Tanya, and my question was, why do planets have different gravity? Me and my brother are curious about...
Turn off your mask.
Me and my brother are curious about space. My question was, why do planets have different gravity? Next year, I'm going to ask, what are the stems of creation? I learned that from an online game called Adventure Academy. The stems of creation are surrounded by hydrogen, oxygen, and nitrogen.
Thank you to all our participants and, of course, to our winners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warwick. I'll just pause here and see if anyone had any questions for any of our students or for their faculty advisors on this.
Any questions? I think it's great. I mean, for winning, do they, do they get to do anything? Do they get a certificate? Do they, I'm always curious about the contest itself.
I believe they all got a certificate. They also, and Miss Warwick can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe their names are in a book. Miss Warwick?
Yes, so we were told upon winning that the books will be distributed to the school, one for the school and one for each winner. And within that book are all the entities that were awarded an award. So they will get to see all of the other winners that came from the United States, Spain, and Argentina when they receive their book.
I thought it was an interesting event, U.S., Argentina, and Spain.
Yes, exactly. I don't know why. I'm not sure if it was something that was put out to all the countries or just those three. But yes, that was an interesting observation as well, I thought. But this came to me via Dr. Daly and then also Mr. Maloney sent it along. And we put it out to the teachers, and the kids decided to do it over February vacation. It was a short window. So that in itself, the kids that decided to do it, I think, was a great thing for them to take this on.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Warwick. It was really great that our students participated in winning. It's even better. And as you can see, there was three different, there was a drawing there, there was a poem, and then there was a question about languages, which is a nice segue into our presentation that Ms. Lindsay is going to when they hear about the Universal Design for Learning and the work that's been going on over the past few years, and specifically this year at the Bachelor School. So, Ms. Lindsay, I'll turn it over to you, who is in our TV studio. I'm there currently, and Ms. Lindsay's live in the TV studio.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Lindsay, and Caitlin Tully and I are the school's Universal Design for Learning mentors. I think we're getting a little feedback. If we can mute everyone, sorry, we're hearing some feedback in here. Before the teachers and students present, we thought it might be helpful to give a short history of this initiative at our school. We're in year three of the district's UDL initiative. The teachers here have quickly embraced this professional development opportunity. In a nutshell, UDL is pinpointing barriers to learning in our classrooms and then doing our best to remove them. It's also helping students seek ownership of their learning so they can figure out how they learn best. We read a Common Book all three years. Additionally, during the first year of the initiative, we had 12 teachers who learned UDL strategies, created lesson plans using these strategies, and had the opportunity to observe fellow participants teaching these lessons. During the second year, our participation skyrocketed, and we had 23 teachers sign up. And we split them between a UDL 200 and a UDL 100 level group. The UDL 200 level group participated in a video club, and teachers volunteered to have lessons incorporating UDL reported. And then our group watched the lessons and provided feedback to these teachers. I know we'd all love to give a shout-out to Emily Pat. She's our district UDL coach, and she's been such a valuable resource. We also thank Dr. Daly and the district for giving us this coaching opportunity. It has been so helpful to have an expert to turn to as we move forward with UDL each year. And she's improved our teaching by showing us how to bring these strategies into our classroom. Every grade level team has at least one teacher, and most have many teachers on their teams who have participated in this PD. This has been so important, as these teachers can make sure that we're using the UDL framework when teams are designing and teaching lessons. This year, Caitlin and I weren't sure how many teachers would sign up to continue this work. Teachers had so much on their plate this year. We were so excited when 18 teachers signed up for a book study. We were also excited when Carrie Calanan, one of the teachers here, shared that she found a book for us to read to bring together our UDL work with this year's District Social Justice and Equity Professional Practice Call. Carrie has been a co-facilitator for this book study, and I'm going to pass the microphone to her to share more about it.
Hi, there. Thanks, Chris. I'm Carrie Calanan. I'm the occupational therapist at the Bachelor School. And as Chris mentioned, you know, the UDL framework, it's really about equality, equity, and expert learning. So I, you know, the connection of equality, that everyone benefits from the same support. And equity, we can remove barriers by providing adequate support based on variability. And also, you know, the goal of the UDL framework is to create expert learners. And expert learners, you know, is basically when students are purposeful, motivated, resourceful, knowledgeable, engaged, and goal-oriented. So as Chris mentioned, when we were asked about the social justice goal, I really made the connection between UDL and social justice. And I did search a little bit, and I came up with the book Equity by Design. And it's really intended to be as a book for teachers. You can see it's by Marco Chardan and Katie Novak. The book really does set critical links between social justice and universal design for learning. And so throughout the 2021 school year, Chris mentioned, we had over 20 participants. And we just continued to increase our understanding of the tenants of UDL. And then again, as they relate to equity and social justice, we were able to create a book study group and through a Google Classroom. We were synchronous and asynchronous. And as Chris mentioned, Emily Pat, our UDL mentor, she was able to facilitate two meetings with us and, you know, really share some great strategies. And as a group on the, within the Google Classroom, we came up with questions. We answered questions. We tried to demonstrate UDL in letting people, you know, do a video or writing or drawing. And then even a step further, instead of the UDL mentors, the mentor coming up with a question, letting the teachers, the participants, walk the question. So the authors do encourage us, you know, or remind us, I guess, that we're all in purpose. We all need to grow. And basically, we're all doing the best we can so that we can be the best we can be. But, you know, within the book, we're creating great spaces, which is really minimizing threats and distractions to students. We've worked hard within UDL to move the own place, you know, for students to use their place. So basically, you know, we do want to celebrate and embrace really elegant identity and, again, variability. So here to show UDL in action and demonstrate, we have teachers, third grade teachers, Karen Gavin and Heather CoCo.
Hi, everybody. I'm Carrie Gavin. I teach third grade here at the Batch. And myself, along with Heather CoCo, are going to talk a little bit about UDL in the classroom. First and foremost, this is a picture that Emily Pat had used in one of her workshops with us at the very beginning of the year. She used the metaphor of teaching this year as a lighthouse. And it reads, "UDL is about being the trusted lighthouse for our students. We're ready to share our light in all types of weather, providing them with support to be the captains of their own journey." And I thought that was really a great quote and something that I think of all time and we navigate this together. So first and foremost, UDL also connects not only to social justice, but also to that social, social emotional variability. And one of the main takeaways for me is treating AICs this year for all schools to minimize social barriers, really hone in on our own identities and what we bring to our classrooms. And this has definitely been a challenge this year, especially in the beginning, when we had some students in front of us, some at home, some at home all the time. So really focusing on how to create that community when we're all in different settings. Something that we did at the very beginning of the year, and we felt that we served a sense of school emotion. Students were presented with a bunch of different emojis. And as you can see to the left of my slide, how do you feel about being back to school? Distance learning, the grade level, your teacher, your classmates, and school overall. And so the responses that we got were a variety. We had some kids loving being in school, some kids loving distancing, and some kids just wanting to be back. But it really allowed us to kind of see where they're at and being able to check in with them and provide that support. Also, to morning meetings, something that I love every year, doing every year. And it's definitely been a little bit different this year. We can't sit on the rug together, we can't tie ties and do things like that. But I think it's important to recognize that we can still connectionally feel even remotely. So the top part was the day described. This is just an example of something that I put on my board every morning as a way for students to learn and see what to expect from the day ahead. And Miss CoCo was a little bit more about the morning meetings here. So I'm thinking Thursday, and this book is on sharing with the SBL in mind. So I tried something that I learned from Emily Pat, Emily Pat in one of our workshops. She presented the teachers with this reading skill that you can see to the right. And it says, "On a scale of one to nine," oh, excuse me, "on a one-to-nine," sorry, here we go, so-so. "On one-to-nine, on a rubber duck scale, where are you at today?" And so some of the teachers filled out, and it was really fun to kind of see. And I thought, hey, why not try this with my students? I wasn't sure how they would feel about this, like, even that option, that choice. You can show me on your finger where you are. If you want to share it with the class, where you are, you are one. Feel it makes them great this morning. Are you kind of a five, kind of so-so? And I was really surprised at what they shared, that, you know, who had a, the alarm's going to go off, and they had trouble sleeping the night before, so they're really tired this morning. And it's also neat to see that some kids, you know, were looking for vacation or, you know, looking for a set pass to get them through the week. So it was really neat to kind of see where they are coming in emotionally and to be able to support them along with that. And then lastly, what we brought up is a book, Our Class of the Family. This is a book that a teacher recommended during our workshop. And we read it to people over the year. And then again, when all the kids came back to the classroom, really honed in on bringing our differences in the classroom. And yes, we are all different, and we have different hobbies and interests. But we're all here to help each other, support one another. So really creating that space for students to share their ideas and their feelings as well. And then this other side, as Ms. Lindsay had noted, building student independence and ownership of their learning. But all examples here are breakout rooms. This is such a great tool to use during a morning. We had students take off from a whole-class lesson into breakout rooms. It really allowed them to be independent learners, working with each other. I tried to mix up a little bit and have a cohort A friends with a cohort B friends so that they're able to be each friends in other classes. It was a really great way for them to work on assignment with a partner or partners, and also allowing them that choice. So after a mini lesson, allowing students to choose to, if they want to do it with a teacher, they want to do the activity with a partner, or if they want to do it independently, so allowing them to make that choice. Also, in the middle, science experiments with our No-Addem Curriculum. It's really great where you can give it a challenge or a problem to solve and give it certain materials, and it's up to you and your team to figure out how you want to solve that. And so this example was from last week. Students were in charge of creating a skyscraper with five levels. They were given a couple of materials to work with, and they kind of just went to town using whatever they would like. It was really neat to see, giving them those options and making those decisions. And then after, we had a little debrief or reflection with highs and lows. We called it Rose and Thorn, something that went really well. And then a thorn or something, a challenge, or something that you would improve for next time. Lastly, I have here an example of a checklist that we use during writing. This is a narrative writing checklist that we will preview with the students ahead of time because we know exactly what is expected of that assignment. And something to bring back at the end to make sure they have everything they need. It's an independent tool to make sure they have everything for writing. And then I pass the mic over to Miss CoCo, who will talk a little bit more about UDL. Thank you.
What's up, everyone? So I'm going to continue the conversation about the connection between UDL and SBL. And we're going to move into funds of knowledge. Funds of knowledge is just another way of saying, what do the kids know? What can the kids bring from their own home life, from their backgrounds? And how can we, as teachers, incorporate that into our own curriculum and everyday learning? So one example that you see, as Ms. Gavin had pointed out, was our morning meetings. And one way that I have done this is by using Jamboard. It's been really, really fun. Kids get to express their answers in so many different ways. Some of them have used pictures, some of them have just done it in writing, as you can see in this example. The question that I posed was, what are you looking forward to most about April vacation? Now, this is a very basic question that we can ask students, and many of them, as you can see, one student was very excited to sleep, and that's very, very prominent right in there. But there was so much other knowledge that we could get from this. One of the post-it notes included looking at a meteor shower over April vacation, which I had no knowledge of. So then I was able to connect with that student after the April vacation and get that emotional connection with that student. But also, I can use that knowledge in my future lessons if we are talking about meteor showers or maybe space as a general topic. So I can look at that student as the expert and bring their input into my own lessons. Another example, we just started talking about the American Revolution. The kids are very, very excited to learn about this. As you can see from this one photo of the student holding the lantern and pretending to be Paul Revere. I started this from getting to know, I wanted to know what the kids already knew about the American Revolution. Kids come in with so much different knowledge, so much different background on these different topics, including American Revolution. And this one student had such a love for American history, especially the American Revolution. And he had expressed that he had a Paul Revere hat, so of course, I'm going to let him wear it when we're starting to talk about Paul Revere. So I was able to create this lesson hook and get the kids excited because one of their students had a, you know, funny hat. But in a sense, we were having, it was very fashionable at this time to wear this type of hat. We went to the history about it, and then we went into talking about Paul Revere, Concord, and Lexington. So it was a really great segue into the lesson. And then I could also incorporate the knowledge of one of my students and keep them engaged, which goes into my next section. So the last section that I'm going to talk about is student engagement. One project that Ms. Lindsay has started with, the third grade classes, is called a Passion Project. And it's a great way to keep kids focused on the task at hand because they get to choose what they want to learn about most. So a couple students picked, so one student picked one about horses, another one picked one about pinnacles, another about a lot of different animals, actually. I was very surprised, we have a lot of animal lovers in my class. So they were able to do some research on Pebble Go, and they get to make a book about what they enjoy the most, what are they passionate about. And that keeps them engaged, and you can see it, but you can also hear at the same time. You can hear a pin drop, it is amazing. And then at the top right corner, I created a virtual classroom to go along with our Wampanoag unit, which was really, really exciting because it was for so many of them, unknown territory. Many of them didn't have a lot of that background. So I wanted to make sure I'm giving them as much knowledge as possible, keeping them engaged throughout the lesson. So we had a photo focus, we got to look at different artifacts as photos, and then also keeping it as a virtual or a digital copy of the textbook along with a paper copy of the textbook to make sure that we were all on the same page, especially in a hybrid learning model. And then in the bottom right corner, I wanted to know what kids got from the, from the unit, from the Wampanoag unit as an example, because student input is so important when we're looking at what kids want to learn about and to keep them engaged throughout the day in various lessons. So in this, I was able to have kids reflect, because reflection is such a big part of UDL. And I want to make sure that kids are given that time to reflect on their learning, give me the feedback that I need to make learning as meaning. give me the feedback that I need to make learning as meaningful as possible for them. And that's really what UDL is all about. And that kind of goes into some student work that I want to go into next. The fourth grade students, Ms. Johnson is going to introduce them, and they're going to talk about their work with UDL, and I'm so excited to see what they have to bring.
Thanks, Heather. Good evening. My name is Lori Johnson. I'm a fourth grade teacher here at the Bachelor School. And this fall, during hybrid learning, the fourth graders read The Trumpet of the Swan by E.B. White. And even though most fourth graders are working on their independent reading stamina, they still all love to be read to. Read alouds provide us the opportunity to discuss important story elements like plot and character development, and they also give us the chance as teachers to model how we think while we're reading, because that's what we try to pass off to the kids, that reading isn't just reading the words, but it's thinking and making connections. So at the end of our reading of the book, we, as teachers, wanted to come up with some type of culminating activity where the students could demonstrate their knowledge of the story, and at the same time, use their own strengths and learning styles. So we created a couple of slides, which ended up being a choice board and a hyperdoc. You can go ahead on to the next one. Thanks. And so they had two different, there's two different slides here, and within the story, they had different projects to choose from. One that connected to social studies, one with science, one with a STEAM activity, one was geography, a writing and illustrating one, and then a poetry and music for performing one as well. So all of these projects related to the story. And you said we couldn't click on them, please? Okay, so we can't click on the links here and show you, but within the slides, there's links, and keeping in mind that the students were only in school at this time, you know, two and a half days, everything they needed to complete this project successfully was in the slides. So they would click on the link of the project they decided they wanted to do, and that would bring them to a page that explained the project, its directions, expectations. And then on the second page of each project, there was a model where it showed the students what a finished product of that would look like. And then on the third page, there was a rubric where the students could use as a checklist and also see how the project would be graded. Once the students finished everything, we came in and we shared, everybody was their own expert, and for students who don't like to share in front of the class, we gave them the choice to record themselves from home on Seesaw, and then we watched it. And once the whole thing was over, we had a reflection piece, as the students did, on Seesaw, which just gave them a few minutes to reflect on the project, tell us their feelings about it, and then also give us as teachers feedback and data so that we can, again, make any improvements to increase student engagement for the following year if we do this project again. So, without further ado, I'm going to call on my first fourth grader here, Vaughn, from Mrs. Hewitt's classroom, and he is going to share his project that he chose, which was the science project.
Hi, my name is Vaughn. The Trumpet of the Swan project that I chose was the science animal research. I chose this project because I like science and love learning about animals. In this story, one of the characters, Sam Beaver, wrote a long funny poem about many kinds of animals. Sam, who was Lewis the Swan's loyal friend, loved wildlife, and finally decided he wanted to be a zookeeper when he grew up. I researched the Kinkajew, which I had never heard of before. The Kinkajew is a small nocturnal mammal. It looks like a monkey, but is related to ringtails and raccoons. The Kinkajew is sometimes called a honey bear. This is because it loves honey and uses its long skin tongue to retrieve honey from beehops. It also likes to snack on termites, small mammals, and fruit. The Kinkajew lives in tropical rainforest and has a prehensile tail that is used for balance and also to hang from while snuggling with other Kinkajews. I enjoyed having many different choices to complete for the project. I got to choose the one I was most interested in teach my classmates all about the Kinkajew.
All right, good job, Vaughn. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Vaughn. Next, we have Arden Redoff, who I think is reading from home. Arden, are you there? Oh, there she is. Okay, and she chose, she's here in a picture with one of her classmates, and she chose the STEAM activity, and she's going to tell you what she did.
Hello, my name is Arden Redoff. On the first grade Trumpet of the Swan project, I chose the STEAM activity. I chose this one because I really enjoy doing arts and crafts. I made the four objects that Lewis carried with him. His possessions included a trumpet, a plate and track pencil, a lifesaving medal, a money bag. I used all kinds of material like wood, glue, pipe cleaner, spray paint, pasta, and wire, both my mom and dad helped me. The final part of the project was to create and design one additional object that I thought Lewis would like. I made a diamond ring out of a plastic jewel and wire and then hung it on a ribbon. I thought Lewis would like to give to Raines, who is one true love Serena, and she could wear it around her neck.
Okay, thank you, Arden. Great job. The kids that chose the STEAM project brought in all the materials, obviously, and shared with the classmates how they made it, what they made, and then they got the opportunity to design something of their own that connected to the book, and they thought that one of the characters would like or use. Okay? And we have one more tonight, our performing project with Lily. And Lily wrote a song, and within the song, she basically outlines the story from beginning, middle, and end. Well, she's only going to sing a short piece of it to you, because she actually had probably about six, seven more verses of this. But she wrote it herself and thought of the tune to do it with, and she's going to come over and sing it to us. And Ms. Lindsay here has projected the lyrics. Come on over here, Vaughn. Do you want to stand? Do you want to stand?
Hi, my name is Lily. I chose to write a song about Trumpet of the Swan for my project using the beat of We Will Rock You by Queen. I chose this project because I love to sing and perform. I chose We Will Rock You because I knew it was a popular song that most people would know. Being able to sing and show what I learned made this summarizing easier for me. I enjoyed being able to be creative while writing my lyrics. Now that the song is all been waiting for, feel free to cough along. Once upon a time in Canada, there was a young boy named Sam Beaver. He went to a pond, saw some swans, mother didn't even know where he was. Trumpet of the Swan. Two swans fell in love, had some cubs, one of them was loose, but he had a prop. His voice was weak, he could not speak, so he bought a trumpet so he could use his beat. Trumpet of the Swan. In the end, everyone was so happy, all the cubs tried, Lewis was the best daddy. All day long, he'd play them songs, now it's time to say so long, because it's me under my sun. Trumpet of the Swan.
Yay! Good job. So as you can see, we've had many different talents and many different experts throughout this project, and the students really individualized it and showed their strengths throughout it. So it was a fun activity to do, and can't wait to do it again. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. So I guess you can see why I planned to do very little tonight. You know, the very good leader knows, just get out of the way and let the people shine who shines. And obviously, the work that was presented tonight really highlights some of the fantastic work that students do, our staff, and, you know, getting the best out of all these students. It's just amazing to watch and amazing to see. So that's our presentation. If anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them and...
That's wonderful. I'll just, I'll just start by thanking all the teachers and also the students. I mean, Lily in particular, I to this day couldn't stand up and sing before anybody. Nobody would want me to, but it's amazing. So, this is Scott, by the way. Anybody, can you answer a comment or question?
Job well, well done, everyone. I am, sorry, this is Janine and Riano. It's looked down to me that kids are so brave, and they just get up and they have no concerns or worries, and they deliver such a wonderful performance, and the way that they are learning and the way that they're grasping new ways of learning, I think is incredible. So, good job.
And I think just this presentation alone speaks volumes to what we've been able to accomplish this year. You know, having people from home, students from home remote in and to present, you know, and it just, it allows that choice, it allows that flexibility. I think it just goes along with everything that we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, the fact that Ms. Lindsay's over there with the teachers and the students and I, I can be here and kind of facilitate, and you folks are up the hill and, you know, from home, it's just, it's amazing what we've been able to accomplish. And it's truly a testament of our staff, of, actually, our students, their flexibility and their ability to adapt to everything that's been thrown at them. So it's just, you know, it's Teacher Appreciation Weekend. I woke this morning, I can't say how much, you know, the work to show how much I appreciate all the work that's done in our district, in the Bachelor. It clearly shows with what our students were able to do so here tonight.
Okay.
This is Hannah Bellbell. I was just going to say, you know, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and we certainly appreciate all of you. And I can say that just seeing how, you know, you have that goal of UDL and the creativity to be able to adapt that to the remote environment is just so impressive. And it's colloquial, I'm pretty sure when you had that board up there and it said something about what you're going to do on April vacation, and it said, "Looking forward to sleep," I'm pretty sure that was my tip, most likely. But, yeah, it was very, very impressive, and all the kids, you did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Rich McGowan. I agree with all those comments. I think also, it's just been really gratifying to watch over these last three years, the progression of the UDL, the concepts, and, you know, I think we, I think you guys, you know, you know, the work, and it's been a great job implementing that, and it came at just the right time for this school year, adapting the curriculum to this remote environment. And so it's been a great thing to watch over the last three years. So appreciate all that work. And by the way, I'm also really excited that, you know, with this food pantry moving just up the road from you guys, taking advantage of that was a great opportunity, and so I would love to see you as well.
Absolutely. Ed?
Thanks. I'll just say two things. First, these nights when we have the presentations from the different schools, particularly the elementary schools, are just the most fun nights of the year for the school committee member. It's, I don't know how we can keep doing them, and each time I'm surprised by the incredible things that the kids can do, but each time it just takes me, you know, whoa. Like Scott said, I couldn't do, I couldn't do many of the things that the kids did here today. And to echo what Rich and Dan were just saying, I think it's a great showcase for both UDL and also just that there are great approaches that teachers can take, and it's wonderful to see kind of the results coming out here in public. You know, these are kids that were reading a book, and not only were they understanding that book on a deeper level than they might have if they just had to do more traditional kind of write a paper on this or answer some questions about it, but they got to explore other interests they had and maybe find new passions with that. I just think it's all fantastic.
And this is Scott again. I'll just say, I mean, for me, it helps, I kind of, we see pieces of this in our roles, and it's nice to see it kind of all come together. You know, we've heard about UDL the last couple of years, and we know that teachers had, you know, objectives around, you know, remote learning or our social justice, and it's just kind of fun to see it all come together. And we talk about things in theory, we talk about fun, but it's nice to see it come together and, you know, see presentations and see how, you know, teachers are implementing what's there and how kids are adapting to the situations. And, you know, it's really nice, and the only shame is that we're not in person to see people. But the only good thing about that is we can't, you know, show that we can't do any of these things, because, you know, every time we do in person, we want to show how little the school committee can do on, you know, how fourth graders are better at these things, and we are, but, you know, we really appreciate it. You know, Mr. Maloney, I know it's your first year there, but a big job, and thank you to everybody tonight.
Thank you so much.
Captain Daly has been on as well.
Yeah, just wanted to echo these thoughts here again to our Mr. Maloney and to our teachers who presented. Fantastic job to Ms. Lindsay, who I know also presented, but also helped with all the technology tonight. That's a huge help for students. You were so fantastic, you made us so proud. I loved hearing everything from the rap to the students telling us about their trip and getting to hear the Cambridge Science Festival winners get to present and speak tonight. We had talked about that award meeting or so ago, and it was really great to hear from the students themselves. So thank you, everyone, for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Talking about Mr. Queen, goes to Christmas fast. I just wanted to say congratulations, and I thought that the presentation was absolutely fantastic. It was great to see the students involved, both in person, yep, I can be there too. And UDL work especially is something that we're very proud of in the district and the Bachelor School, a level of involvement that's pretty much referred to from the first year to the second year, and then to take on a little bit more this year, which was absolutely necessary. The good news is, as Mr. Buckley says, it is part of our district vision, and all five schools are working very hard, and they gave the appropriate kudos to Emily Pat, who is our UDL coach out of steam. I'm actually meeting with her tomorrow morning at eight o'clock AM, so I'll make sure that she knows that you guys were giving her the kudos. She loves the sunshine, but she loves the work, she brings the passion to reach all students. So you were a great representation of that. Thank you all. And Lily McCallum, I think you might be able to challenge Mr. Johnson any later in writing. Good job. Nice job. Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. What we're willing to say and hear about the fiscal year budget, you are more than welcome to stay for this. But don't be, we will not be insulted if you drop on either. Okay. So I think we're going to move on, and we have on the agenda the school budget vote. We've been doing a lot of work to try to close this gap, and I will turn it over to Mr. Connolly to lead us through where we're at with the school budget and the vote we're going to be able to take.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. So kind of brief presentation this evening, and give an update on the status of FY2 school budget. We've certainly been talking about it quite a bit over the last several weeks and months, dating back to the beginning of March, and we're prepared to recommend a vote this evening. I'm happy to report since the last time I was here publicly at the public hearing in the middle of April, certainly a lot has happened with available revenues and the conversation in terms of how to achieve a balanced budget has gotten a lot easier, and certainly appreciate the efforts by families on the side of the county, the town officials, the city, the borough, the town administrator, the support, the town finance director, and certainly support board members and so forth. I know it worked hard to think creatively and put their heads together and look at available revenues and available one-time sources, and be as strategic as possible to achieve both municipal and school balanced budgets. So it makes that effort to do that really as resourceful as possible. So the conversation tonight, I hope, is going to be easier than maybe it could have been or it looked like it was going to be at the public hearing about, you know, two and a half weeks ago or so. So just as a reminder, the original recommended budget that was made to the committee by the administration was a budget that was thirty-four million. to the, uh, community by the administration was a budget that was thirty-four million, three fifty-two, one oh and seven. That was one of the one point seven million dollar increase, which essentially reflected, reflected a five point four percent increase over the fiscal twenty-one budget. Um, as of today, May third, this may as last week, the credit and reflect a budget of thirty-four million, two seventy-six, six sixty-five. So that actually produced a five point two percent. And our budget gap, which if you go back to the middle of April and were well over four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, is down to seventy-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. So this is the list that the administration is recommending and definitely we talked about this at the workshop, um, and, and various other, other sources. I wanted to present this was publicly this evening. Um, but there is, there is a couple of changes that are required, uh, for the budget. Yeah, kind of gets sort of increases before, before the, it, it balances. But, um, we certainly talked about this at the last meeting and at the public hearing and there's certainly a need to add some additional buses to the fleet of ten buses currently to align the school start times and hold the elements being secondary level. So we believe that with this change, it's certainly a positive direction and we can achieve a lot with, with the addition of two buses to the fleet. So add what sixty-five thousand dollars per gallon, that adds a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the budget. Uh, always a moving target in the budget and any, any school, the school budget across the Commonwealth is behind a district tuition line, I know. But certainly, um, the number that certainly changes frequently, but the, with the current information we have today, there is a need to increase that line by forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Michael, very, very quickly, you, on the screen, you're showing the, you're probably seeing this.
Am I not?
You're not showing, you're not showing the numbers that you're going over right now. So.
Really?
It does already follow along. Yeah, thank you, Ryan. Try it again. Sure. Did you have to open this up? But while you're doing that, this is Scott, I'll just comment a little bit. It's a thing. I'll just think the town for, you know, the resident, Mr. Connolly was talking about. A lot, a lot of work was done to, you know, figure out alternative funding for things and to really make projections that help both the town and the school try to be able to balance the budget. So thank you to the town.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're good.
It's better.
You know, you were just, you were just on the first page.
Yeah, I think it was, I think what I presented went to a different screen. Yeah, I presented in PowerPoint. Sorry about that. So you probably didn't see this slide either, but this is the slide I just went over that just they showed that the budget gap was down to seventy-five thousand, four hundred and two. And this is, this is the presentation I was starting to kind of go over. Uh, so the need to add, um, to make some changes to the budget, to add the additional two buses, change the auto district placement. Um, and then we also are able to reduce the transportation line because why not? Because we, we know that you receive a lower contractual rate through the big process and the award to town to garden transportation. So from our original ten buses that were budgeted, you know, we can increase by thirty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, there was some one-time funding that was, uh, in, in the, in the budget. And certainly by working with the town and by being creative, we feel if we make this reduction to health and custodial PPE supplies, but still ensure that we have the supplies necessary for both the, the, the health services and the custodial services for sanitation and, and any PPE with staff and towns as well and so forth to get us through the year. So that was a, a very, um, you know, confident reduction, uh, that we've always made. Uh, this next position due to some low enrollment in, in the program, we always do a point five academic teacher. But, um, we're very confident that it's not gonna have an impact on any individuals, we think we're, we're terrificating and so forth. That, um, that we would, it would be a, a reduction in place now, but we felt like we would make, make this change in the budget, um, due to some low enrollment. Uh, we also felt like we created, this, this is, uh, if you may recall, we added the original budget included the addition of three new positions guided by a strategic plan, um, two of which were school adjustment counselors at the elementary secondary level. So we felt those were the high priorities for our mental and health, social, uh, emotional needs of students. And this was the other position that we were attempting to sort of restore and kind of certainly change the, the position somewhat in terms of the duty's responsibilities. So we felt that we had to make a reduction. This is one position that we deserve weight on and look to, to add and, uh, certainly down the road. So that, that would be a reduction, but it's not at our current position. And then we certainly talked about a number of times this use of S R money, um, certainly elementary, secondary, school, emergency, relief funding, which is part of certainly the COVID-nineteen pandemic and funds available for our schools. Um, so we originally were planning on using about fifty percent of S R two. Um, now that we know we have a lot in that, we can be probably twice as much or more than the amount of S R two coming for fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four. We felt like we could use about a hundred percent of S R two and not create a situation where we're kind of funding cliff um, situation scenario for fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four. So this was by using a hundred percent of S R two funding in fiscal twenty-two, you still have the ability to use S R three in the two subsequent years and have a very even amount of about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of funding to help offset some of the, the new positions we had to, uh, add into the budget because of COVID-nineteen and the school adjustment counselors. Um, and really be able to fund those positions at the minimum for the next three years without having to avoid sort of a funding cliff and a big shift from offset subsidies, present debt, or which is a general fund to create a hardship in any one year. We felt that was a prudent fiscal decision to make. And that really allowed us to balance the budget. Um, this right up here at the bottom speaks to the narrative we talked about of our, our use of the S R two, the S R three funding allotment. And, um, really, you know, we certainly put our, put our heads together to, to develop a list that would be meaningful in all, all areas that, um, as I said earlier, it could have been a lot difficult conversation this evening had we had the town and the finance planning team not, not worked so hard over the last two weeks to, to, to create this belt funding. Um, finding a additional revenue, including funding, uh, device, through revenue plan of the town. Um, some final conclusions, what is, what does the FY22 budget sort of certainly accomplish? We certainly meet our contractual obligations of what is in the affiliate union. So that's kind of certainly a major objective that we need to do year to year. So we certainly would accomplish that. And as we know, we have operational fixed costs from the other year with funding increase, increases, other contractual services increases, utility costs. So it allows us to meet those needs, those fixed cost increases. And it also allows us to maintain and adapt to continue to have strong educational, least down to teacher ratios, especially at the elementary levels, all class sizes, certainly being our recommended guideline. It allows us to maintain the operational infrastructure technologies in the district. Uh, the definitions that we added, the Florida custodian that we added, we continue on this next year with this budget. Um, it allows us to maintain health, safety, service for all students throughout the school community. For those that really important PPE funding is, is going to be there and a bonus school nurse. Um, we continue to be funded, that was added this year. And it allows us to address the social, emotional, and mental health needs of all students. So certainly the, the addition of, um, a school adjustment counselor at the elementary level as well as secondary level. Also part of this budget that is getting funded is the addition of an academic intervention two years at the elementary level at each school to help any running loss or, you know, any running gap that could be there, uh, could, could be identified over the next several weeks as we work toward the end of the school year. Um, and then the district one-to-one program, which was certainly, um, accelerated through the pandemic and now includes grade K through twelve, um, will continue to be supported. We have the funding, uh, there in the budget to support the one-to-one program. I mentioned the expenses for, uh, PPE and sanitation and technology needs are there. And then the operational costs, we've been focusing so much over the last, really, five or six years in the budget, to have those preventive maintenance and those contractual services maintained in all of our five school campuses. For building maintenance standpoint and the ground standpoint, we continue to be there. So, um, we feel we're accomplishing a lot, a lot with this budget in terms of moving the district forward, addressing the needs, um, that may have been identified through this past challenging year with the pandemic. And then providing that student support need, which is gonna be so important for the social, emotional, and mental health needs of students. So we're, we're, you know, certainly a one is accomplished, um, in, in the fiscal twenty-two budget. Uh, every budget has sort of a characteristic involved with it. So there's all of this potential for the additional outside or paying placements, which a couple of increased costs at the line and we always have to watch. Um, but I think we're in, in good standing to kind of address with un, unperceived costs. As we all know, we do, we do have a special education payable agent fund, the community and town need our help to increase funding there. So I think we're, we're certainly able to, you know, we, we stand today as much better than we were two or three years ago to deal with any unforeseen costs in that, in that area. Uh, we may have less reserves available and sometimes we have revenue accounts like athletics, kindergarten, preschool, funding. Certainly, um, facility rental, areas that took a little bit of revenue hit this year. We'll, we'll try to address that as we, um, look to close the fiscal year over the next few months. But it's certainly an area to, to watch. Um, certainly the possibilities every year of teacher Christian savings that we predict may not be fully realized. And then, as we all know, the severity of all the winds we're under, you know, a high cost is often difficult to predict. And the fruit juice programs are forming, especially with the COVID-nineteen, uh, requirements and the, the change that resulted there is often difficult to predict. But despite these five main risks, I really think we're, we're, we're still in a financial standing to, uh, address any, any unforeseen, uh, and, and, uh, risks. So with that being said, and that's really the carload of recovery and changes when we got back and when the budget was presented at the beginning of March to where we stand now. And I think the, certainly the administration through Dr. Daley and the administrative team is very confident to recommend balancing, um, FY22 operating budget of thirty-one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars, which again is a five point two percent increase, um, over fiscal year twenty-one. Um, and, you know, I guess, and that, that mentioned in my opening comments, we couldn't have got to this, this place without a lot of hard work by a, a lot of folks within the community, um, certainly the school committee and members of the, some committees, you know, that throughout the process have really cooperatively offered some of these challenges, funding, um, the left board, the finance committee members, all part of that finance planning team. Um, which, you know, really did an excellent job to grid and we did get to, uh, a much better place today and much easier conversation this evening. And then members of the administrative council, school presidents, directors, um, through our, our administrative team did an excellent job of working hard throughout this process. I certainly appreciate all their effort. And then of course, the students, the faculty and staff, um, who've done an excellent job, um, throughout, throughout this challenging year, making the best of the situation, moving initiative forward, um, it's really exceptional. And certainly made everyone working in the office very, very, very proud, um, over the past year. And certainly the system was going right. I think we're very confident we can take this budget to the annual town meetings and, and be top of that of course. So without, I don't have no questions after, uh.
Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. Um, I'll open up to the school committee members first. If anybody in the public has a question, you can raise your hand or type your name and I'll call them if you have questions as well. But kind of go around, see if anybody has any comments or thoughts. And especially since I keep forgetting about you because you're there. I'll start with you and see if you have any comments or questions.
Thank you. But, um, hard to disappoint. Um, Mr. Connolly did such an excellent job of explaining it. Uh, I don't have any, any follow-up questions.
Scott?
McGowan? Um, I don't have any questions. I, I just want to reiterate what you said, Scott, and like you said, about how hard, how, it's been my first year of the finance planning team. So it's been really interesting to watch how the town and the schools that part of us work together, um, to, to work out these issues. And it's certainly very gratifying to see that, that, that the town does that. It doesn't happen in every town. And, uh, oftentimes municipal and school sides are at waterheads and, and that's not the case. That's not where we're in marketing right now. And I think it, um, I, I think it shows in where the budget ended up. I think it shows in how really, if you consider the, some of the uncertainties out there, how quickly we're at the point where we're proving this budget on, on our usual schedule, but it could easily have been later based on trends and how things have changed. So it's been a really good process and I think we ended up, I mean, it's pretty amazing to me that we have a five point two percent increase in our budget coming out of, out of this pandemic, over the coming.
Did you hear that?
Um, yes. Thank you for, um, working so hard to get it. But in, um, is this like the largest, uh, increase? If I remember correctly, normally we would go for about five percent, but we usually end up around like two or three percent.
Yeah. Did that was the largest increase, um, really over the last twelve, twelve years, possibly. The ten, the ten-year average is about three point four percent the last couple of years. Um, it's funded at about three point eight percent. So this is certainly the largest increase over the last, this, this twelve plus years. I think the last point was higher than two thousand and eight.
Great. Thank you.
Scott?
I'm just really grateful for all the hard work that went into this. And I know it's countless hours and then, you know, I'm thankful for the support of the town, how the town supports schools and how we have the finance planning team and you guys on us at board advocating, um, to see where we were down to, uh, where we are today is just fantastic. So thank you, everyone.
And, and, and I'll just, I'll, I'll just add quickly and then go to Dr. Daley and Scott again. Scott, wait on. I'll, I'll, I'll show the contrary side as well where, so both the town and the school, we didn't aim for too much this year. We really just aimed to deal with where we're at right now with COVID. And so, I mean, on the town side and on the school side, we weren't asking for much. We were asking for, you know, the nurses and the, and the cleaning supplies and the people to do the cleaning and then some social, social emotional learning. Um, so my concern about all of this is there, this is the new normal. And, you know, a lot of, the way we're balancing is this one-time funding that's going to go away at some point in time. And that is a concern when, you know, expenses that are outpacing revenues already for the past few years. As this is in real, I'll point it out, we're doing a higher increase, but a lot of that is with one-time funding, with, with one-time funding. And, you know, I think it's great for this year. I just worry more and more about the future, about where we're at when, you know, those funds run out. But I think we've taken as much of a conservative approach as we could to this budget. We tried to just do what is absolutely necessary right now. Um, I'm very grateful for everybody, you know, working together to get to this point. But, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand that, you know, even at five point two percent this year, a lot of that is just adjusting for the pandemic and what, you know, the needs that we have. And, you know, there are some tough years still, still to come. So.
Yeah. If I, if I may.
Go ahead.
You're certainly correct. I, I think the great, this is a good thing about it, is our, our approach gives us a, a three-year look ahead to, to sort of plan towards that, that time when those, those, uh, yes, the SDR funds begin to run out. But you're right. It's, it's brought up for sure in five and one.
Yeah. That's Daley?
Great. Thank you so much. Just wanted to echo what everyone said about the great collaborative relationship with the town. I wanted to specifically thank Michael for his phenomenal work as always on this. He's so in tune to the needs of the district and is always willing to go back and sharpen pencils and, and make sure that we're able to balance our budget, but still continue to move forward. I agree with what you said, Mr. Buckley, about the one-time funds and the, the S R funds certainly went a long way here to help us out. But I, I'm very happy that we're not using all and we're able to preserve over time. Um, two pieces towards our, our NFTs twenty-five bullet, and I just want to mention as well is with the kindergarten. Um, we're continuously working towards, you know, one of our goals to, um, have, have free full-day kindergarten. to have free full-day kindergarten. We're going to chip away at that. You know, the president came out the other day, talked about pre-universal pre-K. Well, we still have the tuition-based kindergarten. So I think we have some work to do around that that we're going to continue to do. But this budget does include the continuation of the reductions that we already had this year and moving that board. And something else that we were able to do that is sort of, really, is sort of that outside-the-box thinking that Michael and I and Mr. Clean is part of our membership of the same collaborative. We talked about Emily Pat as the UDL coordinator. We would all love a UDL coordinator full-time in district, but we're able to share that position among many districts. Another position that many of us want to have is a, you know, a diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. And so that's a position that we're going to have for the fall. That's going to be shared among several districts. So just very quickly on that, this is sort of still in development, but it's going to be posted soon. But this includes Melrose, Winfield, North Reading, Stone, Wilmington, and Woburn. And this person provides support and coaching for faculty and staff, including leadership of affinity groups, equity teams, committees, and staff retention, develop meaningful sustained professional development opportunities for students and staff, participate in advise and recruitment hiring efforts, both district-based and possibly regionally, provide instructional leadership and curriculum development through an equity lens, an equity audit, and/or assist in the development of strategic planning, assist districts in data collection and analysis regarding equity inclusion, collaborate and support key stakeholders, including parent community groups, to perform other duties as assigned. So we have a, you know, a fractional share of that, but a lot of the benefits and everything are picked up by the collaborative. It's a terrific model, something that, you know, Michael and I worked on with Emily's position through a grant. But this group came together with superintendents and assistant superintendent to do it again. So I think it's just another example of finding creative ways to keep moving forward even in challenging budget years.
Great. Great to hear. So, okay, any other comments or thoughts? So we can have a motion on the group's budget?
I will move that the school committee approves and hereby adopt the final fiscal year twenty-two school operating budget of thirty-four million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. This represents an increase of five point two percent or one million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars over fiscal year twenty-one. And this is Rich. A different.
That is Diana.
Okay. Any further discussion or thoughts, questions? Okay. We'll vote on that. Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I, well, pass it by zero. Thank you for the hard work. Now, would you rather go to our superintendent for the return in-person learning, or do you want to continue on with this superintendent?
We can do the, just the update to continue business first.
We have to continue business, then we will do the return in-person learning on place by Dr. Daley.
Great. Thank you so much. This is Dr. Daley. We have just a few updates that I want to share with you tonight about our return to in-person. As you know, our, all of our schools, all of our students are back in full in-person, started right before the April vacation. We went through the challenges with travel and made sure that everyone still followed our order. We had very good response from our parents that did travel in terms of following the rules. We had the ability for those students to draw remotely. And really, I have to say, made it through last week with not a lot of challenges at all. It was really pretty successful, I think. I will note that there have been some positive cases. I think you've seen at the secondary level, especially at the high school. I will note that those are, you know, they continue to be individual positive cases. We're not, we're still not seeing the transmission in schools, and we're seeing the transmission in schools still remaining the same, even though we've moved to the three plus. And so that is a big difference. Mr. Buckley?
Yes. This is Scott. Just one quick question on that. Where, I saw it right after the break. Were all the students back in school or were some of those positive cases before they came back to school and they never came back? You know?
So out of those large number of positive cases, I believe two of those students have been in school in the last seven days. So very often what happens is students are quarantining already because of a SIBLA. So this is all the information that you can't really share in the updates. But very often those students who were turning positive were already in a situation where they were in close contact from outside of school and knew that they would be positive. So I believe there were only two out of that large number that I presented the last couple of weeks that were actually in school. There are some students that are, that are friends or active outside of the classroom. And so we know that when those students get together without masks in a carpool, this is why we keep reiterating how important it is. It's really, like I've said so many times, it's always, everything's fine until it isn't, right? And you're thinking, I'm just hanging out with my friends. I'm just hanging out with my cousins. I'm just saying. Always, you know, we still need to be vigilant, wearing our masks when we're, when we're together, especially when eating and drinking with, you know, going out with friends in a carpool, those kind of situations. That's really where, the only places where we're really seeing these positive transmissions at this time. So progressing, progressing well there. We have, the return to in-person is scheduled for May tenth. So it's coming up very soon. So we sent out to those students who've selected to be in full remote, the opportunity to change and to come back sooner. And so, I'm sorry, before the end of the year. And so that survey, Mr. Clean worked on that. And I know that that went out last week. And we are collecting all that information this week. Our goal, of course, is to continue to provide through the end of the school year, the opportunity for students to work remotely. But I think to make sure that there's probably a good number of students who wanted to see how it went with the full return, and they now want to transition back for the last six or seven weeks of school. And so that will be through the end of this week. And then on May tenth, those students will fully return.
Do you have any idea what percentage of the students that are out right now will be coming back?
Of that remainder?
Of the people that are out right now?
Yep.
How many of them?
It's still coming in. I don't know the way this figures, or if it's probably about almost one hundred and fifty that are still, I'm going to say probably thirty to forty percent. So we'll be okay to move on. So we've heard some, some parents reached out proactively and said, I'd really like the students to come back. And we had a larger time window to, you know, to figure out the logistics. But our principals have done such a great job of making this work that we were certainly able to accommodate those folks who want to come back on the tent. And so my intention will be to tell the whole community that this has happened and then have them email me if, you know, I'm not looking to put out a survey for people to confirm that they're staying in person. We're going to assume they're in person. And if they, if anyone wants to go the other way, they can let us know as well, you know, myself or the schools. But I imagine that everyone's goal now is to be back in person, and it's, it's working well. There are certainly some students for different reasons that want to remain remote, and that will continue to be in. Just want to be clear on that. I believe I mentioned it before, but I just want to reiterate that pool testing will continue to the end of the year for those that are involved, and it will be able to continue into our end-of-year extended year program. And so we do have some steps in place to continue with that work. We'll continue the project beacon. There'll really be no interruptions, and we're able to add new folks as they, as they sign up. So that's been going very well and very helpful. Vaccinations have been very successful. Sorry, a question about pool?
I was just, yeah, this is Rich. Just wondering, have you seen an increase of people participating?
There's been a slight increase, but not a tremendous increase. Yeah, I think, I think we've got a lot of the people that really were excited about it, that wanted to be involved, involved from the get-go. And it's been a, you know, our nurses have been terrific, as they have been all year, making this work, giving us a lot of great information. We've had a couple of instances that, it's been very helpful, but for the most part, it's done its purpose, which is to provide that reassurance, certainly bridge the gap between having most of our staff vaccinated, which we are getting to the place now where almost all of our staff are fully vaccinated. There's a few that are now waiting for that fourteen-day window, but we're well up over three hundred letters that we sent out to confirm that they are fully vaccinated. So that's, that's great news for our staff. So those are really the major updates for, for the return to school. I think we have a good process in place. I just wanted to share also related, you know, differences this year, obviously, with all of our senior activities. And we've been meeting collaboratively with the town, the Board of Health Director, Mr. Bracy, Mr. Gilberto, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and the Public Health Nurse, and Mr. LaPrest, who've been working very closely with the students, just as we did last year, to come up with plans for graduation, plans for senior events, including, you know, discussions around the prom and some other pieces. And I, I don't want to completely steal Mr. LaPrest's thunder, and, but he's going to be announcing and sharing out all of those events very soon with the work with the students. So I think it's going to be, you know, something, again, it's going to look a little bit different, similar to last year, but I think some of those events are going to be back for students. And for these students who missed their junior prom as well, I think it's nice to know that some of these things are being discussed again for our kids. So I think you probably saw the signs on the fence as you came in, some of those best traditions from the last year are back. But there's certainly opportunity for several events for seniors.
This is Diana. I have a question for the kids going from fifth grade to sixth grade. I know last year they did kind of like a car parade and things like that. Do you know anything that these plans to those kids as well?
There is. There's conversations. I know that the parent groups and the principals are working at all the, all the years, but especially the transition years, fifth grade, eighth grade, and senior year. There are conversations. Again, how much of those things that take place and what they look like is still under discussion. But there are, you know, and some of the guidelines have opened up a little bit to allow for some more, some more events, outside events, different type of things to recognize our students. It's definitely different than it was last year in that, you know, most of the majority of the students are back in school at this time. And so not only the celebratory events, but we're also talking about what do the typical step up, step up from middle school, from elementary to middle, some of those events, what will they look like this year? We want to, first and foremost, be safe with those, but also try to provide some of those opportunities because they are very important transition opportunities. So I know that that's certainly something all of our principals are working on in youth school.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Daley. Thank you. Okay. Move on. Mr. Clean, we get update from teaching and learning. I'm a board that started twenty-five percent. I would just quickly move back to survey and let them tell what I'm saying. Thank you. Got you? Yes, please. I'm a partnership from me. I want to congratulate you on the project that's been dealing with this, this one thing not to have to work on right now. It's time to, here. Definitely, you know, congratulations on that. It's been a, it's been a, it's a transition, so many new positions on December first, twenty twenty, in the middle of hybrid learning. Still, it's something new to do, something that, kind of get caught up to speed when you've been doing one thing for a long time. And this is probably the first time that I've been able to sit in front of you and in front of the community. So I want to take a second and just thank some people and acknowledge and appreciate the work that has been invested to get here and to help my transition. I want to thank the school committee, the parent community, and the students. I want to thank Dr. Daley, especially having the wealth of knowledge of this position that's been invested in this district over the past decade and some change. It's just really nice to be able to ask those quick questions, the ones that could take you an hour to get the answer that you can get in five minutes. So it's made my life so much easier. My administrative assistant, Nicole Orlando, for her daily support and reminders. The administrative council, strong relationships with the leadership and the building principals, and their help in allowing us to move forward. The curriculum teacher, the curriculum teacher leaders have been nothing but welcoming and supportive during this transition, and have brought a lot of knowledge and experience to help us during this time, especially with the change in models. The central office staff, training me in some of the new protocols and things that I need to experience. And then finally, the bachelor school community for the experience that I had there, helped me prepare myself as a leader, helped keep my vision bigger than just K to five, and how we get to where I am right now in the community of North Reading. I am one of those fortunate people when you, when you think of longevity, that I have been in the community of North Reading since nineteen ninety-six. So you don't want to do math on that quickly. But it is a town that I started as a teacher. I've always been enamored by the community, the support from the parents, the support from the school committee, the administration. The budget process is always tedious, but I always feel like we're able to get what we need for our students. And the parents are, want the best for their kids. And when we work together, we can do amazing things. So I've been very fortunate in my experience, and I hope to continue that in this role. And looking back at our teachers in this past year, just the amount of commitment, the investment that they are in their profession, the way that we use data to drive our decisions and our goals, the collaboration that has been taking place this year at all levels has been remarkable. Some of the healthiest collaboration I've seen in the district in a really long time. And yes, is some of that a response to the school closure and coming back in the fall? I believe it is. But then the value that you find from working with others and how to share the responsibility has been absolutely remarkable to observe. The ability to reflect upon what we're doing and to always want to do a little bit better. You know, we are, Dr. Daley starts at the top with the school committee and the work that you, you come up with a plan, you check to see how the plan's going, you treat that plan. There is no one way to do anything. So it's been, it's been my honor to date to serve in this position. Before going further, I just wanted, I did want to recognize that it is Teacher Appreciation Week. And thank you to all the educators in the district for the work that they do. And before, you know, so I don't have to send, call Colleen Reska Nurse Appreciation Day on May sixth as well. And the nurses have been absolutely remarkable this year with the work and the support that they've taken on to help our students and our families through this time. We're good. Oh, you did, sorry. I can't see what you're doing. That's a problem. In a year like no other, you know, it's, I'm proud of the work that we've achieved. The planning that's gone into the hybrid learning model, all the digital technology that's come in to support the student learning has been, has been remarkable. It's been a great opportunity for me that I'm fully committed to. Over the past five months, I've worked hard to support district initiatives and help lead our schools to act their full in-person learning. It's been a challenging year, but I look forward to working with all of the vested stakeholders to develop a more comprehensive plan to support our administration, teachers, and staff and students to drive our continued success. And I've been doing that by taking time and meeting with people to understand the current state and vision of teaching and learning in the district, which I had a very good handle in. As a K to five educator, I actually work very closely together. But my understanding of the K to twelve vision and the work of the administration has been, I feel, pretty solid. But the time I've had to be able to talk to teacher leaders, teachers in other buildings, students, parents in the community have been really helpful as I, as I start to think about what that plan might look like. Continue to build strong relationships with stakeholders to improve our professional practice, impact student learning, student learning and the experience in our schools, and take the time to celebrate the strength and areas of success that we do very, very well in North Reading, and continue to identify areas of growth because we can always do better. Go to the next slide. And the curriculum focus for twenty twenty, it's really started, you know, I've been fortunate to be doing some of this work back when the schools closed in COVID and March I was helping out, and then going through. So I've had some traction there of trying to understand what the power standards and the work that we did with the state with the school closure and the remainder of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And then really focusing on the beginning of the school year on working with teachers and the scope and sequence, and what that might look like in hybrid and remote learning as far as pacing, student engagement, and student learning outcomes. And unfortunately, with the trends and where we are, to be able to return to in-person learning has been, has been super helpful for our teachers and our students. The energy in the building is back. You're seeing more consistent teacher and student interactions. The teachers are able to observe the learning and growth more consistently, provide more opportunities for guided practice, and give immediate feedback. The technology they were using to do Um the technology they were using to do that in remote was was good and better than nothing. But there is nothing quite better than seeing um working with students directly when they're in front of you. With uh assessment and data, we have um, we didn't have MCAS in twenty twenty, so we, one of our big data objectives wasn't available to us. But we've been spending a lot of time, one of our common assessments is is iReady that we use in grades three to eight for reading and K to eight in math. Um and we we figured that'd be a good place to start when we were looking at some of our student learning goals and preparation. Um it's only one data point, um but it's it's a good one to be able to look at. So if you look at the reading diagnostics, so you have a comparison on the left-hand side is the mid-year diagnostic from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and then the mid-year diagnostic from this school year. Um and the good news is we have multiple years of of this data and the trends are pretty consistent. So you can notice that the uh there aren't a lot of differences, there's a few kicks here and there. Uh but it is a different set of students that are in the band. Mr. Rupp.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Um diagnostics, it looks like there's about twenty-five to thirty percent of the students that go A C. That's about four hundred fifty. Is there some? Why is it that, you know, about a quarter to thirty percent are not at that security?
This is the only place that that was a large number. We did talk about that quickly. Um and I'm not sure if it was the timing of where COVID came in, if a few grade levels did not finish their testing, if their window was extended or something like that. I did not drill down to to find out which students and where the participation didn't occur. Um I can definitely do that and get that back to you to give you that because you'll notice even in, I think in twenty twenty, that it might seem a little bit smaller. It might be more students than we had enrolled because some students sometimes will take a diagnostic twice if they get signals that they're taking the test too fast or too quickly. Um so we go through there. But that's a fair question. Um with the reading, I think the biggest thing that we're going to look to focus on coming out especially, this is grades three to eight, is in the grades one and two. Fortunately, this year we were able to bring our kindergarten back to full in-person. So they've gotten a a full one hundred, well, they will have a full one hundred and seventy days, so ten days shorter of what they usually would have in an instructional year. Um but in the early literacy, the work of last year's kindergarten and first grade students of being taught how to actually read, the science of reading is something that we're paying attention to. Devol data and other information that we have available to monitor that as they start to get into their older grades, upper grades. It really continues to be a focus on vocabulary comprehension in literature and informational text. So when we go to the math on the other side, the data's a little bit different. Um not not too concerning, but it makes a little bit more sense with the missed days of instruction, uh the pacing. Um that occurred that we we had a little bit of a dip, if you notice the data between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. We're seeing more students in that tier two um this school year. But the good, the good news with this data is it's on grade level standards. So at the beginning of the year, I didn't, I didn't pull the beginning of the year data. The majority of the triangle would be yellow, right? Because it's on grade level standard that you're taking the assessment. So your mid-year is has made some marked improvement. And I didn't want to go through the whole set because that's so much about the school improvement plan goals for some of the districts, so to be able to celebrate the success where they're going. But math has been an area that we've been, we've been focusing on to give a little bit more support to our students, address any of the holes that may exist and provide a little bit more remediation. Um earlier in the school year, we we allocated some additional math support through Title One to meet the needs of students. And then we're also um hoping to pilot a summer academy this summer through Title One for math, just to try to we're we're looking right at the mid-August instead of the traditional um middle of the summer, we're looking to do something a little bit closer to the start of the school year to focus on remediation. And then to move a little bit of preparation into that next grade level transition with that standard and try to do a little bit of preteach as well.
Would that be in person or not?
That will be in person because it's uh not part of the extended school year. So that's the data that we're using and 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 hopefully next year we'll we'll have more. Um we have plenty of common assessments to be able to use. To go to that next slide, we'll start talking about MCAS. We have the, MCAS has started with administration. Um you know, we the we're waiting for the state timelines kept getting moving. There were still thoughts that they might go away, um but but they did not. And it's it's, I think that most people would have preferred to have a year, another year off from state testing. I think the data might be helpful for us. I think the state has advocated and and reduced the testing sessions to make it a little bit more manageable to be able to provide us um some information from our students. The biggest difference is the class of twenty-one and twenty-two. Um where they still have the option to take the MCAS, but they did not need to. They just need to have a successful completion of a relevant high school course. Um and then the state provides us all the relevant courses through that for this year and for next. Um it is important to to recognize that we'll be, we're offering that test and and we'll be doing it again in the fall for students who are interested in different um scholarships that are available and or the field of literacy both require a threshold on the MCAS test to achieve those. So as those opportunities are scheduled, we'll be sure to communicate that to students and families alike. So there's no surprise for that. We don't want think, people think that they just don't have to take MCAS. It's still a tool that will be available for them to help them. Um the biggest thing with grade three to eight is it's all going to be in person. Obviously, we have students in remote, so some students that are home and remote learning have been invited to come in if the parents are comfortable bringing them. We said, I want to thank the principals and the teachers for the work that they have done to create testing stations, the testing sessions that are um embrace our guidelines and families to feel that their students could be in safety school um doing that, but they're also doing a remote learning. And I think that's why they're using grade three to eight to to test this this um means of assessment out. It will be just like you are there, if you're sitting at your student desk, you'll have your Google Meet on. They'll be uh watched and there'll be the protocol for security. MCAS is pretty tight with what the expectations are. But that's something that our our students will be experiencing this year and we'll be able to report more about that after the completion of the assessment. Through um educator evaluation is the next big update. We, working on those, we have the new teachers developing educators in years one through three. We have our professional path educators, that's teachers with anybody more than three years of experience. And they've all been responsible to create student learning goals and professional practice goals. We can go to the next slide. Um it's just a, what a, what a year to be a first teach, a first-year teacher, you know, like I said, as a new assistant superintendent. If I'm coming right out of the school, nobody has prepared you for this. Um if I worked in another district before this, nobody's prepared you for this. I am prepared for that because that happened last time we were here and I know Dr. Daly will shut that off for me. Um I want to thank the the mentor coordinators of the district, uh Jesse O'Brien, Catherine Jones and Des McCurts, um who have worked really hard with the district-trained and assigned mentors. I think you went to the power button on the top last time, Patrick.
Yes, I did.
Um and most importantly, I want to thank the commitment of our first-year educators. It's it's a lot of work to be a first-year teacher. Um I can't, I can't imagine what it's like to be a first-year teacher in this, in these conditions. So they have, they have stepped up and 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 tried to meet the occasion as best they can. Um with, for the years, for the teachers who, oh, our final meeting will probably be June third. I'm just trying to confirm that. That's the best news of the night. We're hoping to do our, an in-person meeting instead of virtual for our traditional ice cream celebration of some sort. So that will uh, that some of that we go can can come together because that was a nice tradition that we definitely missed at the end of the year last year. For our developing educators in years two and three, they have been participating with the mentor coordinators and the F D L um mentors. Working on a S F D L modules in five sessions. Uh that's mostly been led by Lori Blake, Nicole DiGnato and Andrea Gagnon, where they have attended um, I think they're three, two and a half, three-hour sessions on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible decision-making as part of the district. Work to continue through there. For the student learning goals, absent of, it's not having the traditional data available to us until really when the the diagnostic was completed in September, so at the same time we're in the goal, we didn't have a ton of student learning data to work with. So we we allowed teachers this year to have um either a student learning goal or two professional practice goals. So they all worked collaboratively to create a student learning goal based on on learning objective and achievement in the hybrid or remote learning model. So you saw really a uh focus on engagement, participation and success along with the best practices of hybrid or remote learning. Meaning um through all the digital learning training that they had this summer and the continued work from when the students came into school to where we are. This is where teachers continue to share and keep working hard um for where they are. The professional practice goal, as as Chris Lindsay mentioned um at the beginning of her U D L session, the district decided that it would be a a good time for a professional practice goal to to look at social justice. And when we started to build out our social justice goals, you know, you just you quickly started getting into language of cultural proficiency. As Dr. Daly mentioned a little, a few moments ago, diversity, equity, inclusion and what that can look like in our schools and our classrooms. Um it's actually a perfect example of when we talk about goal setting, of what we want for a district as far as having school committee goals, administrative goals and teacher goals all support um and address one area of improvement. Um so if I'm correct, I believe the the school committee, one of your actionable items for a goal was to support a review of the curriculum to ensure diversity, equity and inclusion. And then also participate in and support ongoing working groups for social justice and reopening. And then if we, the administrators were able to work under that umbrella to kind of start to look at our ability to model for faculty and staff, the mindset of social justice and equity. Work together uh to reflect, assess and in response, expand knowledge of what it means to be an agent of change as it relates to social justice and equity. As an administrative council, we'll work together. Um we've digested numerous articles, had multiple conversations and are really looking forward to our summer work for N R P S twenty twenty-five to be able to define, define a little bit more detail in what that strategic plan would be. For the teacher goals, this is a kind of a template that we we've shared with them as an idea that would come through um throughout the twenty twenty-one school year collaboratively, work collaboratively to identify the concept of social justice is appropriate for my grade level. In addition to background reading and developing a common language, this goal will also be measured by actual items, including a process to review curriculum, material and lessons to ensure equity for all students. So teachers that set goals like this, that's close to three hundred professionals, have all worked right under what that school committee directive was, from that work of what we need to do and to try to provide that um as we move forward. They all, they all involve self-assessment. All of this work begins with understanding where you are, who you are, what your cultural beliefs are and how, what power you have as a classroom teacher in choosing what materials you use and how they're presented. They all included some level of P D and collaboration. And the teachers were, in a, in a survey, provided so much positive feedback to the work about what they felt like it's brought to their classroom community, just the time to be able to invest and share with colleagues. Um so we need to value diversity, manage the dynamics of difference. And then we're going to continue to work on institutionalizing our cultural knowledge and proficiency. The state provides us very clear direction on what the expectations are as as leaders and teachers. And I included both in the link at the beginning of that where it said educator evaluation is the um teacher's standard two indicator uh indicator B, cultural proficiency, on what that language is to help them drive those goals. And then I've included on this slide too, what it will look like for administrators. The state used this as a direct to help us, help our teachers really focus for the twenty twenty, for this current school year. And most of the meetings we're in right now, it appears that this work will be uh consistent for next year as well. From the work that we've done, we've been able to talk about professional development and planning. Um this year was definitely a different year where we invested ten days at the beginning of the year for professional development that was really about preparation for school opening. It was so important to be able to spend that time to talk about all the safety protocols, to review all the tools that we had, to figure out how we were going to take attendance, all that work that went into it. We even adjusted the calendar to move a professional development day, not to lose another in-person student day uh for hybrid learning, right? So we had that regular rotation. So instead of having a day off, we we pulled back a P D day off the table that we're going to put on to the end of the school year. Um so the students will end on June sixteenth and then we'll have professional development days on June seventeenth and eighteenth. Um which is going to give us a some powerful time to bring in some really, it's really good P D to to recognize the work that we've done, to frame what the work that we have to do as we plan for the summer. Um over the course of the year, the amount of work that went into self-care, I felt like the district, Cynthia Corin, Director of Student Services, did a fantastic job working with the F D L mentors and um other service providers to make sure that our teachers and staff were able to take care of themselves and focus on self-care to make sure that they were best prepared to take care of our students. And my favorite analogy is the one where you're on the airplane, right? You need, when those oxygen masks drop down, you got to be able to put it on yourself before you can help somebody else. And we, that's something that we've really stayed consistent with all year and try to keep a pulse on where our educators are. So they're in the best place to be able to help our students. And working with the teachers this year and and social justice and the work trying to get feedback on where they want to go for professional development next year. Uh this is just a quick survey question. They could have put in anything else. This was specifically on social justice and cultural proficiency. Um but ninety percent of the participants of the survey wanted additional professional development to support cultural proficiency in our schools. And then followed by, which I thought was interesting, um teaching adults and students to speak up against bias and injustice, um which I thought was a a pretty powerful um P D option um to consider. One thing that through the pause group and working with P D at the beginning of the year to support the professional development of educators was one course that we offered for all teachers, uh well, we offered four teachers, I shouldn't say all teachers. Um it did fill, there was twenty seats that filled in the first thirty-six hours. Uh it was a fifteen-hour professional development course uh that really broke into three modules, the way it was broken down was culturally competent teaching and learning, breaking down racial inequities and striving for an equitable curriculum. Karen Hall is a, is a English second language teacher from Reading, Massachusetts. She was the uh presenter and she has put this course together. Um it was filled with teachers and administrators for five, at least five administrators attended to work with teachers and it included breakout sessions of being able to talk about specific articles and focus through there. Um and their survey back over um hundred percent would recommend this this course to a colleague. So it is, as like we said, something that's probably going to be a big rock for us in the future. And it's something that we're looking to to make sure that new teachers to the district have the opportunity to understand how important cultural, culturally proficient teaching and learning is this district that we can also offer um to new teachers and hopefully some other teachers who will want to participate in the future. that we can also offer, um, to new teachers and hopefully some other teachers who will want to participate in the future. And then now we, we take everything that we've learned from the year as we start to, before we wrap up, we really got to start thinking about what next year starts to look like and come up with that plan. So I know that we've had lots of conversations about the, the build-out of N R P S twenty twenty-five. We have curriculum development projects that we'll need to spend more time with that probably weren't as intense this year. Um, just due to where we were in our, and what we're asking our educators, but recently our world language standards were just revised in April, uh, so we had to to break those down and start to write our, rewrite our curriculum. We have an art standard that were approved in twenty nineteen that we need to provide our teachers more time and opportunity to get into a little bit further. And then we're also working on some English language learning as we, um, curriculum from, as a result of our, our Office of Language Analysis Self-Assessment. At the end of the year, we'll, as always, we'll take a, a, a better look at the data, um, and hopefully be able to look at some of that M C A P to see what the, the state is telling us. Really focus on the special emotional learning and the continued impact on our students. Cynthia Cohen does say that the best is where, we've gotten through this part of where we are very well, and those additional school adjustment counselors that we're talking about, and the time that we're putting in to put support for learning loss and things like this. This is, this isn't just going to be back to normal in September. This is going to be a multi-year project to make sure that, that we're in a place where our students continue to perform at the highest level in an environment where they're, they're challenged, they feel successful and comfortable. So that is a pretty lengthy, verbose update of where we are with teaching and learning. Um, I could talk to you about probably about a dozen other things, but we can do that after.
Thanks very much. This is Pauline. So Laura, I'll leave you again. Any questions?
At the beginning, you were talking about, you were sort of encouraging a couple of different assessments from last year and this year, and, uh, I think, you know, there's a, certainly a general concern in society and, uh, that students miss so much or are, are going to be quite a bit way behind. Um, and so I wonder if you can speak a little bit to, um, how those assessments at school play out as we get into the new year and also what steps are taken in the new year to, to sort of see where students are at compared to where they might, you know, normally be coming into those situations.
It's, um, I really use one set of data like everything else, like what we're going through. I'm really depending on where, where hopefully going to be investing time on that June seventeenth day, really focusing on department and content to go over scope and sequence, performance and competence assessment. What did they, because that's one of the things, one of the hardest things I think for our teachers is when they come back in September, they think September, well, they already started ten days late. Now they got students in person for two days, you had, you had higher bar. I, we need to be careful of how much did we cover well, right? Because I'd rather slow down, teach, make sure our students are learning, be able to identify what items that we might need to revisit pushing to next year. That's where that planning is going to be so important as we get ready for next year. Because if we don't recognize that and we just keep going, yeah, they're going to be there and they, they run the risk of expanding later. So, um, I think that the M C A P data will be another source to be able to look at, and then we have so many other different assessments that we use um, as common lessons to review, and then also teachers feedback on that.
And in general, it's not uncommon at the beginning of a year to do assessments to sort of, to check in anyway, to see where, see where kids are, and then you kind of go from there.
Every year, kind of, yeah, this is what everywhere we have got some level of diagnostic, whether it be yet ready or find out where students are, to know where they are, um, and to plan accordingly.
And then on, uh, the educator email process, um, I know in the past we've talked about, um, the, you know, managing the volume of evaluations is something Dr. Daly, you talked about when you were in Stroll, uh, a year or two ago. In general, has, how have you, how have we addressed that, um, to sort of share to even out that burden and, and, you know, is, are you doing, is, is what is, are, are individuals doing, are still doing too many quote-unquote evaluations?
I think we're always looking at, um, how many and what is that helping amount. I think that it's kind of like classified, or some years you have twenty-five, fifty-five, some years you might have nineteen, um, but the, I, I do think we were truly sensitive this year to mainstream the process and make it as functional for educators and administrators. Um, I think that at the end of the year, we'll probably look to recalibrate this work's wonky. Um, Dr. Daly did keep most of the people that he was working with. I was working with a lot through the first couple of months, but now that they're willing, he was ready to be taking on more and wanted to and should be, uh, doing more of what that practice is about to the school. Um, some of the, the the secondary coordinator positions in the district that will come off will be able to take on some more and pull off. So just the reorganization, it is an annual exercise that we try to do, and, and people are very involved trying to balance it.
Okay. So one thing we've done as well is we streamlined the process to really focus on the goals, and we were able to do that this year for everyone. Um, but moving forward, that should help as well. And we've streamlined the amount of paperwork that's done. Um, and that's been through the negotiations with V N R E A too. We still want to give them valuable feedback. We want to keep it focused. We seem to have a, a mutual agreement there, and then really it's through the addition of some of the positions that are in our, in our P S twenty twenty-five that are not yet a part of our budget, that we're in those second or third tiers that we continue to be there before we can fully realize that those ratios that we need for evaluation.
Other comments, questions, and who would like to give them? Howard here, please. Name?
Right, okay. Um, I just, um, Diana, I just, I have a general question for my own perspective, but, you know, with the, we think about kids and possibly, you know, being behind and having to catch them up and that sort of thing. But, and even with parents that I'm friends with too, there's some children that have done so well in the remote environment where they've kind of kept up and they, it didn't impact them as much, and then others where they are falling behind because they don't, again, individualized learning, it's just not what works for them. And what is your thought on, how do you see the kids that were advanced engaged? Because I know there's going to be a lot of focus on those that fell behind, and I think that's where it should be, but do you feel like those, those children that are yearning for, for more when you move into the, the next grade, and if you're taking a step back, if that's the strategy, if that will impact them at all?
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily say that the strategy was to take a step back, um, per se. More of the understanding where the students are.
Yeah.
I think that by nature, our best practices include how to appropriately challenge all students in the classroom without, um, alienating students that are, are still working to get to the grade level standards. So it, it take a little bit creative activity on how you deliver your, your instruction and how you support. And I also think, you know, we saw the budget support some academic intervention tutors, um, at the elementary level. Um, and I think we'll need more data to see if this is a bigger problem, as Mr. McGowan said. The data is enough to pay attention to, like the reading is really not as significant in terms of ours right now, where students are reading every day, you have to read to, you know, how to get to the next level on your video, you know, you're constantly reading all the time. So that is the math and the direct practice. Same thing as when we look at why do we struggle with geometry as a, on M C A P for math, because we usually see it for one unit every single year. If you don't practice that skill all that time, hopefully with the operations and numbers, then we'll get that back with, with helping them be more successful. Um, and if there are areas of need, we'll be creative on how that's a system.
I just figured maybe those gaps that are always there might be able to figure out, right?
And I think when you look in that, where we're paying attention to that increased number of kids in that, that tier two, that yellow group,
Yeah.
is to see where they are at the end of the year to that grade level standard. We're still using that data to drive the support that we're giving right now to see if we can make a difference for those two by the time the end of the year diagnostic comes up.
Thank you.
President, any thoughts?
Uh, well, to that's, no, no questions. Um, I think, uh, this is a great presentation and, and thank you.
I guess I'll just say, um, right, it's a cool presentation. It's nice to see what's happening, and I know we set our goals and then to see how, how they kind of vote for us, the whole district. Um, I question that's a little bit unrelated, but this is your job and you transition in the new role. I don't know everything that you guys do, but I know that when Dr. Daly was in that position, a lot of time he wasn't in the district. He had to go to different meetings, go to town and everything. So I would imagine that it's nice in some ways that you're here more right now, but how do you definitely change in the future? I mean, maybe, maybe some of those things won't come back, but like, how will that role change in the future? Because, you know, your first year, you've been able to be in district a lot, and I know that when Dr. Daly did that position, he wasn't.
I personally, I think that you're, I think you'll see more of a hybrid model coming out of a lot of the, the larger interest groups. I think the department in bed will realize how easy it is for them to schedule, um, synchronous live meetings, but then they're also recording them, and then they can make them available to people that are super helpful. If I've had a conflict, to be able to send something, you know, I can get a recording later. Um, the job like stuff for me is something that I'd be more interested in doing some in-person stuff and building relationships with people who are in this role and other districts, uh, to, to be able to rely on and, and, and cultivate my growth as a assistant superintendent. Uh, but I do see, and I hope, you know, that the majority of the time is here. There's, there's going to be different things you have to do. Um, and however it is, it will happen.
I'll just add to you, and I, I think the hybrid model is what's going to come out of this, because for years we tried to do more of this and just people didn't have the technology, didn't have it, you know, so we talked about this large job alike group for the North Shore, C S D N that we kind of lead. Um, talking about alternating every other, you know, having an in-person meeting for some topics and then having like the destiny groups come in for the larger um, remote meetings. So I think there's a lot of opportunity, because it is something that I think it's great for Sean in his first few months in the role to be here as much of these band, to form some of those relationships with the secondary level teachers that he knew, but now he's really getting to know them a different way. And I just want to say thank you to you for a great presentation and for all these pieces that you covered. But in addition to all those bullets of your job description, Sean's also the assistant superintendent, and he's been there with me as a right hand, um, you know, second right hand, like Michael does, to do everything from, you know, the return to in-person learning, the start times, the, you know, he really, when I needed someone to really help me through the school testing and COVID and all those things. And he's gracious, walking around the building, looking at traffic with me, and he's sort of like the mayor, you know, he knows all the kids. My thought I would say, he's got all the batch of other kids that, that remember him and look at him. He's got the high school soccer players, so, um, he's really just been a great addition to our, to our district team. And, and as you said earlier, I think, you know, to take those um, skills and talents to that full district level, I really, it's such a difference having him here since December. Um, and it's really made us able to do and allowed me to do more of my job, and, and, um, it's been hard to delegate, but it's been easy to delegate to Sean. So it's been, it's been great, and I, and I do appreciate how much we spend just working together, he, Michael and I, and Cynthia and Dr. Downs working together closely. So it's been really great. So thank you for the presentation.
McGowan?
I, I thank you as well, and, and I'd just say that, you know, this is a great presentation to have, and we'd love to hear from you a couple times.
Yeah, oh, I, as I was doing this and trying to, this is organizing, trying to be a, a total time follow-up, because I know how busy you're in, you are. I, I would really appreciate that opportunity of, of whether it's quarterly or whatever we decide as far as what that is. It's never, that way we can maybe get a little deeper on one thing and then get the next one after and stuff like that. So I think I could bring it here.
No, we, we always budget lots of time for these assistant superintendents, so if you're over here. We, we have the time in there.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thoughts? Okay. Moving on. So the next thing on the agenda is school choice vote, but I'll be honest with you, this is something for about next year's, um, next year's school year, and then we don't have to vote till the end of June, and then we do a collection tomorrow. I think it makes more sense for the elected committee to follow that. I'm going to pass over this at this point in time. We can address it at the next meeting.
And as long as it's done before June for our, we can even try with May seventeen.
Yeah, we have one more meeting, and so, and we, we usually, I think that, uh, I, I think it makes the most sense for the committee that will be here to be taking the vote. Um, and then we go to the North Shore Education Consortium Budget and Tuition, right? I assume Dr. or Mr. Collins is going to be leading us through this, right?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. Right. So as typical, um, the two member collabors that we are part of, in collaboration with North Shore, uh, we share with the, our stack annual budget. Um, there's, you know, the highlights here, which are reflected in the packet, is, um, I think they certainly have some challenges that is maybe due to COVID pandemic. We are looking at, um, some rate increases a little bit higher than what it's been previously. Um, I think for member communities, the rate of, you know, five percent, which is a little bit higher than, as we've seen at every school. Uh, and they are increasing their membership, um, rate, uh, as well as membership fee by five thousand dollars, which we have not done for members years ago. Um, I think some of this is probably pandemic related. I would think that I can, I read through that there highlights. I don't think that, that, that was reflected. Um, but I think overall, we have, we have two students in, in the North Shore place right currently, and there's a chance that we could have more next year as well. So if you look at the tuition rates for a member and non-member communities, it certainly makes a lot of sense for us to, to be a member of Shore. Shore's feeling that along with the discounted, um, tuition payments for students that may intend, it makes sense to do so, they're, they're out of cooperative and, and professional development benefit and opportunity to, to work with, um, within this consortium and, uh, to, to and, um, certainly do how that relation exists in classes as well. So we certainly, we support their, their budget and, um, the average. Now, okay.
Yeah, Dr. Yeah, I'd just say that I believe there's also, they, they don't receive S R funds, I believe, in the state. So they're, yeah, they have a one-time, uh, request for member districts to provide five thousand dollars, which would give them about a hundred thousand dollars, which would allow them to be, um, you know, fully deposited for the year. So I, you know, again, as, as Mr. Connolly said, it's a wonderful collaborative relationship. Um, you know, Fran Rosenberg does a great job leading this group, and there's all the great programs they provide, which are very, very special, um, specialized programs. But it's also all those other pieces as well, and, and the collaborative is, um, agreed for different job likes, different, uh, possibilities, the job like program I spoke about earlier, they, they house our financial assets for that group, for all of our member districts and, and beyond, so, um, certainly give us support for them, and they did a great job with the budget this year to, uh, to stay where they needed to stay.
Just to be clear, the vote tonight says we need to vote in the two, vote to renew our membership in, in there. I mean, we, we don't have to approve there, right? Actually, we are the member district.
To, to accept the, the budget as a part of the. So I'm on the board. I've ordered to approve the budget, but then I'll just have to bring it to.
I mean, I have to make a motion to accept the North Shore Education Consortium budget for this year twenty twenty-two. And question name is Diana. So we'll take the vote on this. Name?
Diana.
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 Rich.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
I'm an A as well, after five zero. Very much. That includes both of us, and we have a routine matter. First start with the minute. Thank you. Andrea, do you have to spend our minutes?
Certainly. And move to approve the open session minutes of April, sorry, on the April, open session, budget workshop minutes of April as well as written. Second?
Issues and any comments?
Okay.
Vote, Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an eye as well, that's a five zero.
I am making a motion to accept the open session minutes of April fifteenth as written. Second?
Any comments, members here? Okay, vote, Janine?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi, sorry.
And an eye as well, nine zero. That's all we have. Is the budget update, Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you, very strongly. So the April budget report is reflecting the impact of this evening. It's potentially accelerating financial activity. It's about through the end of April. Yeah, there's not a lot of information through the issue report. But somewhat, sometimes I feel like I'm sort of broken record, speaking to the highlights of the budget update. But as we all know, certainly the money, kind of, these expenses this year related to COVID-19 with various equipment and upgrades. Certainly, you know, technology items that had to be addressed and it's done so relatively quickly. I'm happy to report that we've worked really well, leveraging any available funding through available federal funding sources, through the municipal care act, work with both town administrator and town finance director. All of those funds, which was essentially agreed up to for the school department, five hundred and fifty thousand, although a little more than a one point three million dollar lot that have been sterilized or expended and transferred over to that fund. This report's reflecting, you know, after information. We have really good established relationships now with some PPE vendors that offer state contracts at a pricing that we get down very, very quickly. So it was a time when these lead times were very, very long and you had to be so on top of it. But now we can, we can turn around and get PPE when needed very, very quickly and it's nice and right. So really what we're focusing on now in the month of May and June would be holding the fiscal year. We're going to open in conferences, open our discharges and trying to have a nice, successful, strong closeout. I think in terms of the utility expenses, we still certainly encumbering the majority of our sort of heating and electricity costs. But I do anticipate there's going to be savings from both heating and electricity lines that we could reportion elsewhere as we typically done. I've spoken about the revolving houses and the need to kind of monitor this. And I, again, it's not immediate concern, but it's certainly a need to, to look at these as we approach the last couple of months of the year. And really make sure we get some healthy balances that we'll be looking to next year, given this still a longer one certain year. On the payroll side, there's certainly some projected surpluses and changes that have occurred after that, because the budget was adopted. But we certainly did a really good job having the necessary staff and using the federal SR and reopening and technology essentials grant that we did have to bring in the, not only the equipment and the supplies, but the staff that needed. There's some balance requests in some line items that I've spoken to in terms of federal education and the administration and stuff. Two lines from, and attrition and so forth that we, to experience some level of savings. But overall, I think the majority of our payroll lines continue to be within our budgeted line items. And I think we are, a lot of work happening over the next seven to eight weeks. So now that the budget's adopted, for fiscal twenty-two, the focus is really going to be fiscal twenty-one and blow it out. And we had a later process, so that, that was quite windowed, time is stretched. But I'm confident we'll have a solid closeout of the fiscal year. And I really believe we are well positioned to put ourselves in good financial standing at the start of fiscal twenty-two. Certainly special education prepayment, which I mentioned, I know, I believe I mentioned in the, the write-up. We've already started to encumber and see if those end to the report. It all reflects a good portion of that. And we're going to continue to try to do the thing that we've talked about during the, yeah, five to two development, of the development process. But I think, yeah, I think with good financial standing, there's work to do to close out, whether we're prepared to do that. I also added a page, additional page to kind of show you the summary of the SR money and everything that we've expended to date. But it certainly was a lot happening in fiscal twenty-one and there'll be more happening in fiscal twenty-two, the SR two funding. But you can certainly see that we have extended all of the reopening grant funding. We're on pace to expand all of the SR one through, by June thirtieth, we've expanded all the global learning technology essentials grant, which is associated with hotspots and pro-look student devices. We do receive a prevention fund, state programs share, we're on pace to have all those funds extended on June thirtieth as we need to do. And that mainly was a lot of PPE and supplies, some of the costs for pool testing and those types of things. These costs were for nursing, to contract trace, that's been part of that grant. And the SR two, there's some elements really planned for fiscal twenty-two. We're still waiting patiently for the release of SR three, which we think will happen by the middle of this month. It should be coming out really soon. And then, I spoke about the municipal care act. And then the school efficiency funding grant, we've already moved out the VOS for this two experiment. I know Mr. McGovern is very excited to see, to receive these two, but it's a very special program. And I also included the timeline so we can kind of see what we're basing on. So you always want to spend first and you want to spend first. So certainly the expansion fund, which expires on the thirtieth, each expense first. And this is potentially the plan that we're, we're putting into action, that we're going to talk about during fiscal twenty-two budget. SR three will be the last event because that's the time, timeline that we have to set. Any questions on that? I do want to just talk, I'm really pleased with the food service program and they, they earned a profit in the month of March. I haven't gotten the final April numbers, but I know with all the students' turns, I've been speaking frequently with Mr. McGovern and I know the mail count's really off, they're really high. So I think, I think the food service program has really been working hard to deal with another change with all the students coming in and having, getting changed the way they were doing their, their job. And they've really done an exceptional job. I had an opportunity at the little school today and saw that, that program in action. And I do want to reference this. Along with Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurse's Appreciation on Thursday, it is a school food service worker, kind of a five zero day on Friday. So we'll be having a kind of special recognition for each of them. And they've really done an exceptional job. I know with the remote grand girl program that takes place here, it's really a district-wide program. And really received very, very well by the parents. And they really done an exceptional job. So we're going to be honoring them as well on Friday, May seventh. So I want to report about student activities, but I'll leave out any questions on the budget before I get into student activities.
The only question that I have, this is, um, only question I had was on food service. So you said about like five hundred in the budget. Does that affect, that gets more or less, I think, for the year?
Yeah, so that, that was, again, that's an effort to try to move to the expected that was probably originally planned to keep from the revolving house. The general thought as we look to close out, to, again, to definitely, definitely protect that revolving house down on the head of next year. Thank you. Any questions?
I'll be excited. I'm going to search the questions. Any other questions?
Great. So the quarter three student activity report is included in your packet. Essentially request account balances through the end of quarter three, which is March thirty first, twenty twenty-one. So these have been along with our, our, our policy procedures. They've been reconciled with the bank balances. There hasn't been a lot of activity at the elementary schools of monitoring if these balance have changed significantly. Everything's been reconciled. The middle school and the high school have various subaccounts. So I included a breakdown of those balances, but, you know, to be the pride, my office is an exceptional job as a bookkeeper. And they need accounts to work with the club advisors, the treasurers and the school administrative assistants at the elementary level. But everything is, is standing here as well. So that'll come to any questions.
Questions? Mr. Collins, thank you. Okay. Diana, you stepping up for your staff daily? All right, no, no business donation. Subcommittee updates, we have planning team on the book twenty-third from McGowan. If you want to try nothing?
Well, I think that we saw the results with the reduction of how we needed to balance at the seventy-five thousand. So I, you know, I think they continue to work and really, you know, Roberto and the, and the financial director. Or, yeah, um, just, there's not a lot of work to shepherd all this across us and there's anything else on that meeting other than those numbers, right?
I have just a couple of, name, name part of that. The only subcommittee we had, that's why I had plenty to make in, made better. Doing, athletics subcommittee in that's at eight AM, athletics subcommittee May nineteenth at one PM. Finanz subcommittee also May nineteenth at three thirty PM. KDC makes it at four thirty PM. And that's it for that. Administrative report, Dr. Daley, anything?
Yeah, just got a few items tonight. So I wanted to share that in parts of my picture, a parent at that other school is nominated for the LEAP for education recognition. They nominated Julian Foreman and, sorry. Oh, that's hard, yeah, I'm sorry, it's hard to say. So Julian Foreman is a paraprofessional in Miss Canyon classroom. So that was wonderful that she, that she was nominated for that award as well. You may have seen as well the USU's in world report that North Reading has moved up this year from last year's ranking. They're moved up to, this is a ranking of over seventeen thousand, eight hundred public high schools in the country. Last year we were two thousand, two hundred forty-one. We moved up to one thousand, seven hundred eighty-three. So the methodology for this involves many factors, college readiness, reading and math proficiency, reading and math performance, underserved student performance, college curriculum breadth and graduation rate. So we thought that was just great to build as well. And I, I just also wanted to share that I, I was alerted to the fact that there is a book share on, on the topic of antisemitism that was shared with chiefs, town administrators, superintendents. And there was a book discussion and the authors doing a lecture series. And so I wanted to learn more about this and check that out. So I went to the book discussion the other night. I thought it was, it was excellent. The book's very good. I, I will not say that I've read the whole thing because I only just received it last week. But I think it, it certainly is a, is a group that we want to be a part of. You know, some of the stories that I heard from some of the other communities were much more disturbing and upsetting. And I think we, you know, we have had some incidents here, but not, not the level that some other communities have had. But I think it's, it's very important that we, that we stay ahead of this and have these important conversations. So I, if anyone wants to join that group from the school committee, I, I could certainly share that with you as well. But part of what the group is looking to do as well is to recognize in January Holocaust Remembrance Day and some other events like that as well in our school. So I think that's certainly something you can take on. So it was a great experience and I, I shared this with our chiefs and town administrators as well because they're, they're interested in keeping us at the forefront as well. So.
Yeah, please share. Any correspondence? I don't know if this time. Do your business. We have a meeting Monday night seventeen at six thirty PM. Saturday, June fifth, we will be at town meeting. And so put a meeting on for before that as well. I'm still up in the air. Thursday, June tenth, we'll have a meeting at six thirty PM. And Monday, June twenty-first, we'll have a meeting at six thirty PM.
One note, I, I did, because of the number of retirements this year, there's only one at the elementary level. And so I just combined all the retirement recognition as well as the school improvement plan, all to one night there on the twenty-first.
Nothing else? I want to make a motion to. Sure. So. One second. Okay. Any comments on that or debate? Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm an eye as well. Thank you, everyone. That's a five zero. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.